All right, this is tonight's agenda, everyone. Technically, I just don't seem to be able to get that end up. Let's open up the meeting at 6:30. My computer says 6:40. My phone says 6:36, so we're gonna open the meeting at 6:36. And the first item on the agenda, I'm gonna turn, I'm gonna take this agenda off now, and I'll get this on the website, everyone. Or you can go to the website and see this. I'm sorry about that first glitch of the night. Okay, Jim and Dwayne, the first item on the agenda is to move the minutes, approve the minutes from the emergency meeting held on March 15th. I'm going to share those right now, so that everyone can see them. And there we go. Maybe saying, okay, stop this here. Yep, thank you. Here the screen for a regular meeting. Emergency meeting, there we go. Okay, so there's the minutes, you guys have then sent those.
Yep.
And if you are all okay with that, we can take a motion to approve them.
Make a motion that we accept the meeting, the minutes from the emergency meeting of, go down a little bit, Angus, so I can recall the
Thank you.
The date.
I don't know what I just did, but it seems like the whole thing is a
I just want to get the date right.
March 15th.
March 15th, okay.
I've lost control, there we go, okay. My screen got gigantic for a second, sorry. Okay, that's the wrong thing, so, okay, we have a motion from Jim.
I'll second him.
Okay, there's a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I can try to. That should be, that's as loud as it goes. That's as loud as I'll go, but we can't hear as far as we can, so that's about right there. Okay. The next item on the agenda is to appoint our sub-registered. Let me pull that up on the screen for everyone. Well, thank you. Okay, so this is on the screen, this is our, we do this every year, we appoint our sub-registered, which is are the folks who are appointed to issue burial permits where the deaths occurred in Deep River during the hours in which the town clerk's office is closed. These appointments are made by the town clerk with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, so we are not making the appointment, but we are approving the appointment made by Amy of both David Blackwell from Swan Funeral Home and Jordan Wells from Robinson Wright and Wymer. We do this every year, right around this time, so. If we can get a motion, or if there's any discussion or any questions about that.
No discussion on my part.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay. Motion to
Make a motion to accept Mr. David Blackwell of Swan Funeral Home, Old Sabre, and Mr. Jordan A. Wells of Robinson Wright and Wymer as the sub-registered.
I stuck that.
Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, and now I'm gonna see, I think that Scott, or Sherry, is Scott here too, or do you know? Oh, there he is, hey.
You can't see me? Come on, hi Angus.
Sorry.
You're doing great with this, good job.
No, 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 we'll get better. Hopefully, we don't have to practice too many times, and we'll get better.
Wow.
But we will get better, and just before you start, hopefully, we're going to be able to do this, so it's easier for other people to view. I just learned this afternoon that we can somehow go through Zoom to Facebook, which can, we can stream right through the town website, so hopefully, we'll be able to get that news out to everyone, so we'll have an easier way for folks to view and not have to use their phone or something like that. But anyway, the last, the fourth item on the agenda is a discussion of COVID-19 by our health director, our Director of Health, Scott Martinson, who is here with us. I'm just gonna open the floor to you, Scott, after I tell you what I, how much I appreciate the work that you're doing through this. We talk almost every day, and at least once a day, and it's very much appreciated, all your efforts, and Sherry.
Yeah, thank, yeah, thank you Angus for your support. Yeah, just, I'm looking at the latest eight data. It looks like, you know, just briefly, 618 cases, 71 hospitalized, 12 deaths, you know, like most people suspected, the death rates are predominantly 80 and older. Looks like there was one death between, or maybe two, 50 to 59. But, you know, this is a disease that primarily afflicts the elderly, you know, with, excuse me, with the worst consequences. You know, a lot of these towns that are showing no virus is based on the fact that the testing at the state level has not been receiving the results from the private labs. So, you could barely, very quickly see this fill in, specifically, once all the reports out there at the private sector get shipped to the DPH lab. So, at this point, we're really saying it's pretty much in every town in the state of Connecticut. And it's not defined by any barrier. They're seeing the worst down towards New York, and looking at the data, it looks like they got a hotspot in the middle of the state. So that's kind of the state level. Sherry's gonna talk a bit about our local level, and then we should do a little Q and A, I think would be the best thing. You know, to kind of get that dialect going, because the information that I can give you now could change in 30 seconds. So it's more, we're adapting as we go. Pretty much like all of you are, so.
Yeah.
Sherry?
The numbers that you just gave me, Scott, are, there's 200 more positive tests than there were this morning, and two more deaths than there were this morning, so this is changing all the time, every minute.
Yeah, they're seeing a doubling every three to four days, pretty much at this point. You know, I mean, it's not all doom and gloom, I mean, you know, Matt Carter, who's one of the smartest Epi's that's working for the state, is pleasantly surprised that Hartford and other areas have not been afflicted as much as he may have thought, you know, three weeks ago. That said, you know, it's okay to be cautiously optimistic and hang on to a little good news, but, you know, that's what's happening. So, we'll see if that, you know, stays the case. It's always good when an epidemiologist is pleasantly surprised. That's not like, you know, public information, because what's happened in other countries is the complacency after they thought that disease was eradicated are facing serious issues once again. They got too complacent, too quick, thinking they were disease-free, so I'm hoping, you know, that the country, you know, that follows their lead, so to speak. Sherry?
Oops, sorry, Sherry, I gotta unmute you. There you go.
As Scott said, only a very small portion right now of our cases are coming through the state DPH CT Ed website that we have. I have found the majority of mine through my contacts with the infection control nurses in the hospitals are calling me directly, and some of them I've gotten from the family members of others that have been tested but haven't gotten results, so I've called directly into hospital labs to get confirmations on a bunch of our cases, so that we can act and get them support sooner than later. When you speak of talking locally, do you want me to just speak about Deep River?
Yeah, yeah, why don't we do that, and maybe assess how we are with, you know, their homes and, you know, so forth.
Yeah, Deep River would be great to hear about, but just the region as well, I think this may be heard about.
Deep River is very, is very easy, it's one household right now, even though we only have one positive test. The other family members who are all self-isolating in the home and haven't gone for a while all have similar symptoms, but without testing, and they're, and the physician is not recommending testing. Why take them out of the home when we already know that positive COVID is in the home? We've been supporting your local elderly housing to keep things calm, and and people well advised as to them being the highest risk, and that you as a community are doing everything you can in their best interest. We continue to, you know, support people in their needs and make sure that the EMS is and the police responding are protected by, when we reach out to the people that are positive, letting them know, you know, if things get worse, please let your dispatcher or wherever you're headed, if you need emergency help, know that you are positive COVID-19.
So, okay. Excellent, Sherry, thank you, yeah, and, you know, through our district, we cover Old Sabre, Clinton, you all should probably know, but you may not, Old Sabre, Clinton, Deep River, Haddon, Chester, I think I got it. So we have seven cases district-wide. There's three in Old Sabre, and then we have Haddon, and then Deep River, and then Clinton. Chester is the town that, you know, technically does not have a positive case yet. So that's where we're at with that. You know, Angus, if you want to talk a little bit about the parks and kind of what we went through today, and and just kind of like, maybe that could steer into Q and A or something like
That's, that's fine, Scott, that's one of the things I did want to talk about. One of the frustrations for me, and I imagine for a lot of folks, is the advice of things that we can do. It's so frustrating not to be able to do something. The advice has been the same from the beginning, to isolate, to keep, you know, the social distancing, six feet apart. And when it comes to our parks, I mean, we're advising folks that it's okay to go outside, and actually, it's good for you to go outside, try to spend some time, but remember to distance. Some, most of our surrounding towns now are closing their parks. We've chosen not to do that yet because of exactly that, but I would ask all of our citizens, and I hope that this gets out beyond just the 18 or so folks that are here tonight, that we can when you go to the parks, remember that just because you're outside, you still have to keep your distance from folks. And if you guys could speak to that a little bit, and maybe, you know, if anybody has, anybody that's here has any questions, I'm not sure, I know I can open you up, I just need to raise your hand or something. There are folks that I don't have cameras, so you gotta somehow or another let us know that you have a question. Yeah, so I don't see anybody. Oh yeah, so why don't you tell us about parks, Scott? Is there anything else that you have to say about that?
Yeah, yeah, the parks on a district level, we're all of the same mindset of Deep River. You know, we put signs up, and we're gonna work to put more signs up. It's like anything else, if we find that it's getting abused, or we feel uncomfortable, then we would reassess, but I agree with the fact that a lot of people have to take ownership of their own health and safety, and if they want to swing on a swing, as long as they're six feet away from someone else, who are we to say not to do that? However, if that gets abused, then that gets reevaluated like any other decision.
Yep.
So, a lot of it's gonna depend on the character of the town, that the climate of the youth, the weather concerns me a bit, because it will get nicer soon, and that brings more people outside. We kind of got lucky the past few days. People kind of were just dreary, it was actually an excellent few days of cold, damp weather to keep people inside, I'm thinking. But, you know, it's, it's, we've gotten there slow, and you can still drive down to a Promwell or a City Stop &amp; Shop, and there's 500 people in there, and it's just, you know, so we talk about social distancing and risk, and, you know, not having a kid be able to swing if they wanted during this crisis probably isn't the best idea.
Right. Hey, we have a question from Mike Spanner. I'm gonna try to unmute you, Mike. There you go, you should be good. Can you hear me? Yep, Mike, thanks. This is Mike Spanner.
I just had a quick question about, you mentioned there was a family that all seemed to be positive, so, and one of them was tested. From my understanding, like, an effective means of, I guess, managing the situation is testing, and then tracing, and then quarantine, so like, is there any value, or are there any activities of like letting, or somehow voluntarily kind of tracing who else they might have been in contact with, so that we can get a heads up that we might expect to see symptoms in a short period of time or otherwise?
Yeah, great question, and I'm gonna defer that to Sherry, because that has become a, you know, a 15-hour-a-day job, so go ahead, Sherry.
When I spoke with the positive case, I did a detailed history on everybody in the house, including their place of work. We're asking the folks who are working to reach out to their employers to let them know that they were positive, so that the people that are working there can monitor themselves and look with temperature and signs and symptoms as well. So I did, I do know where everybody worked, and those companies were informed, and everybody, and because of that lag between notification somewhat, and us being informed, they've already been self-isolated. And particularly the family that we're talking about had heated the, all the messaging that we've all been doing before, we had cases that, for social distancing and putting themselves on self-isolation. There is no quarantine, this actually is still a voluntary situation, so we do a lot of education, a lot of education, so that if they get worse, that they know how to protect others who might be responding to them.
Yeah, great job, Sherry, I mean, that's, yeah, very important. There's gonna come a time where contact tracing may not be as important, but at this point in time, when you have limited cases, it's still pretty important, so I hope the efforts that we're putting in in the state is, will reap dividends. But it's the best ammunition and fight we have against it right now.
Right. Okay, Bobby, I see you up there. Mike is that?
You, you mentioned. I wanted to add on to that, you mentioned that you notified their places of employment, but what about people, residents locally, that they may have been in contact with? Or like Adam's Grocery Store, or other places that they've been to?
That's
Have you looked into that?
You know, the amount, the amount of, a true exposure is not considered a passing-by person, it's considered, you know, spending some time in a close proximity with that person. So, you have no idea all the people that you're walking by in Adam's Food Store that may have some symptoms. So no, we're not able to, we don't have the resources to go to that, and it, the state doesn't see that as a necessary entity.
That, that wasn't exactly what I was asking, I'm talking about people that they either saw socially, or just the fact that
Oh, yes.
They went to the grocery store, so that you could make sure that the grocery store was extra clean, or
Yep.
You know, extra measures were taken.
Yep.
I don't mean people that they passed by.
Oh yeah, no, if they were able, when they were, they told us who they, if they went to, we asked them if they went to any social gatherings, if they went to any places in 14 days where there are other people, we get their names and we let them know as well, and the places of employment are encouraged to do deep cleaning as well.
Yeah, that kind of tracing is, we're lucky, we have the staff and time. It's probably only happening in maybe, I don't know, 30, 40% of the state by now, especially down in the New York end, because at that point, it becomes meaningless. So, it is a good thing as, you know, the areas that aren't really in that hot zone to do, and the supermarkets and all that, I see it getting better, but not quite good enough. I see a lot of mom pop shops know more about, or are doing better social distancing than our large-box retailers in Clinton and Old Sabre, so yeah, it's still a problem. The, this governor is doing this layered, you know, shutdown effect that I think will continue. Although, excuse me, they can't shut down grocery stores, they can certainly make it easier for people to operate without getting too close to each other when they buy commodities. They have the infrastructure, they just haven't gotten there yet. They've already
I did see
You know, I mean, it's there, but there's too many people in too many stores still.
But I did notice today, Stop &amp; Shop is doing, has having their employees go around with hand-sanitizing wipes, and wiping down all the high-touch areas of the carts and of the baskets, and so they're making an attempt.
Yep, it's getting better.
Yes, I know at Adams, they're working as hard as they can, number one, to keep their shelves full, but also to
Exactly.
Keep it more clean.
You know, for all of these, you know, outbreaks that have happened throughout the world, you know, we are blessed that the infrastructure is not affected, you know, food, power, water, the things we've been through with hurricanes, and along the shoreline and floods. You know, we're on the web right now, and will continue on the web probably throughout this, and we're all gonna be able to be fed, and you know, it's really, we're fortunate in that respect, and we gotta remember that this is just, you know, it's a hunker-down period. You know, I mean, that's the best, I guess, our president can put it, but if he's hunkering down, we should be hunkering down, because, you know, it's no joke, but that doesn't mean we can't live our lives just in a different way for a while. It's gonna be the new normal, and people are adjusting quickly. You know, you wait five minutes now at my Cumberland Farms, because you can't make your own iced coffee, but some nice girl makes it? Great, you know what I'm saying? The guy's six feet behind me, no problem. That's the way we're gonna be operating for a little bit, so baby steps, it's getting there. Little more consistency on the state side would be nice, and, you know, we're plugging away.
Yeah, I will speak to that a little bit. The governor is, is rolling out, it seems as if an executive order comes out every other day. But that, you know, they, I think they're thoughtful, each one, it is, as you called it, a staggered, staggered approach, and it is kind of a one step at a time. Let's see what we can get to, and see if people will take this on themselves. I think he's assuming a lot of responsibility that citizens of the state will, will adhere to suggestions rather than orders.
It's, it's easy for public health experts to say, hey, you know, shut down everything, go inside, you know, but I know as a human, and, you know, being through this for, you know, 22 years, is there's a lot more to it, you know, and then, and the human life is always the first thing, yes, but also, the long-term mental health of society has to come into play too, and it's showing already throughout our town, so we gotta be cognizant to the fact that people need as much quote-unquote "normalcy" within their lives as possible, and specifically the young. And we'll, we'll get there, but it's important messaging.
Right, right. I don't have any other questions. Does anyone else have any questions for Scott and for Sherry? I know they've put in a long day already, and we can let them go.
I just have something quick to say, Angus.
Yep.
I just want to commend you and Gina and Scott and Cheryl for all the hard work and dedication in keeping the residents of the town notified of what's going on. We see emails coming out, we see blogs coming out daily, and I know it's a trying time for everyone, but especially for the leadership of our town, I think you guys are doing a phenomenal job. So let's all stick together and keep it moving.
Thanks, Dwayne, I think the end of that is really the most important message. We need to remember that we are a community, and, and we're a small community. We live here for a reason, because we like living in a small community, we like our neighbors, we like we like each other, we need to help each other. I think the message, the biggest message I could send right now is, yes, hunker down and all that, but call your neighbors, make sure everybody's okay, make sure if you have an elderly neighbor or someone who's a little ill, or might be a little ill, ask if you can go shopping for them. Just talk to your folks, talk to your friends, and try to try to help out however you can. We've done, the schools have done a tremendous job ensuring that food is distributed to the families that need some. The Community Health Committee has done a great job supplying some of that food and keeping the pantry open. And, you know, the schools have started classes again with the remote things that they handed out. They spent two days handing out Chromebooks to kids, so that they could take, you know, still be continuing in their classes, so this really is a community effort, and we will get through this, and we'll get through it together. And let's just remember, if someone gets sick, we don't need to ostracize, we don't need to. I think the worst thing we can do is to, is to start spreading rumor or whatever, just, let's just, let's just remember that we're neighbors, and people are gonna do their best.
Yep, I'd like to echo myself what Dwayne said, and I commend you all for your, your, your work. It's, this is not a political thing, this is not a personal thing, it's a community thing, and we all have to be together. And just to, what Angus just said, don't ostracize someone because supposedly somebody has, or somebody sniffles, or whatever. We all have to take care of ourselves, we have to take care of our community, and move forward in our new, hopefully temporary new norm, and again, I, I commend all the officials across the state and whatnot to, what they're doing to try to contain this, and once the dust settles, we'll see, I think we'll see that all this effort that is being done is being done for the public good, and not political or party or any of this stuff, it's all, I'd rather we, as a, as a town, a state, and a, and a country overreact than underreact.
Mm-hmm, right. I don't have anything else for this agenda. We could, I could speak a little bit about the last executive order, but it doesn't have much, it's actually, it's going to have a lot of effect on how we pass our budget, and, and how we have public meetings, but also, another message is our, and we're probably already aware, but our our presidential primary has been moved back to June 2nd, so we won't be voting until June 2nd for that. Adoption of municipal budgets, we, we are going to try to have all, obviously, all of our meetings are going to be held with some sort of broadcast, but the governor's executive order removes the requirements for town meeting and a referendum for that, the same thing for our school budget, so we're gonna have to hope that, you know, I can tell you that the Board of Selectmen, thanks, Susie, I'll be right there, are gonna work as hard as we can to make sure that these are all as broadcast and as public as we can. Sue, I don't see a microphone for me to unmute for you. If you want to type, there's no, I don't know if you have a microphone on your iPad, but I don't have a, do you have yourself muted? Because I don't have any control to open up your, your voice. Everyone else has got a little mute thing on it, and you do not. I'm not, I'm not sure, but it does
It might be because she has her earphones on.
Oh, yeah.
I think she's using her phone for her audio, and not her iPad, because I see her phone number here.
Yeah, all I see is iPad. Susie, will you try to pull your earphones out of the iPad for a second? And see if that opens up your microphone? I just don't know. Nope, nothing. There is a chat, if you go on your screen, there's the ability to chat, and Nothing. But if you, if you use your laptop to chat, if you click on your screen, you should be able to type your question or your comment. I'm sorry, I have no control over.
Or text you.
Yeah, or send me a text.
So, so while she's typing her question or whatever she's doing there, I wanted to make a suggestion that once this whole coronavirus pandemic is over, now that you've seen how easy this is to do online conferencing, I think it would be a great idea to, you know, still meet in person like we normally do, but have this available online so that people who cannot attend in person still have a way to attend these meetings.
That's a nice idea.
Would hope that we don't do this just perfect. That would be great.
Well, I was thinking the same thing as we were trying to do our practice runs for this. It is pretty simple to sit here.
You guys, I think you guys did a great job of doing this. So, so you'll, you see how easy it is, so thank you.
We haven't gotten it perfect yet, that's for sure, but we'll keep trying.
Yeah, I think Angus, when, when you called, because I was called in first, I could hear everybody and see everybody. But when I was using it through my phone, I, you could not hear me. So there's something there.
I have to, I have to unmute you.
Yeah, like if someone uses the phone instead of the, the mic on the computer.
There's Susie's cat right there.
Where, 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 chat? I don't, oh, yeah, I am concerned about the loss of democracy in town input if we lose meetings. We are still going to be having meetings virtually. What we, what we will not be having is remote voting. We don't, the governor's executive order seven I requires that the legis, the the Board of Selectmen to authorize the municipality's budget-making authority, which is the Board of Finance. So we will not have a vote this year unless this, unless this breaks up much sooner than we thought and we're able to do that at this timeframe that we have. But I, I understand your concern, I have the same concern. And I had hoped actually that we may be able to delay things or something like that. But we really don't, given the fact that we've got, we do have a fiscal year that starts July 1st. So we have to get this in place and it fills out. But we will continue to talk about that. Anybody else? Yeah. Brett, I'm not clear on this. Are you saying the budget will pass without a town vote? Yes, that is, that is Brett, the, the summary of the, this is a summary, this is not the executive order. This is Executive Order seven I, which was issued, hang on one second. Jai, seven I, that was issued on March, nope, don't look here. Hang on a second, this was issued Brett on March 21st. And to summarize it, you can find it online if you want to, I'm sure. But the summary is that the, that the Executive Order seven I requires a municipal, municipality's legislative body or in a municipality where the legislative body is the town meeting, the Board of Selectmen, to authorize the municipality's budget-making authority to adopt a budget for the July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021 fiscal year and set a mill rate, notwithstanding any provisions of the state statutes, special acts, municipal charters or local ordinances. And it says, the next step is provides that the budget shall be adopted without holding votes required by charter or without complying with any in-person budget adoption requirements, including town meetings, referendum or special town meetings. And requires the budget-making authority to comply with the public meeting requirements set forth in Executive Order seven B, which, which is what requires these, these meetings, the remote meetings, to take reasonable steps to publicize the draft of the municipal budget, which is, that's what we always do. The difference is being we're not going to be able to gather in person. And at this point, the Executive Order seven I takes away the opportunity to vote on it.
So I, I have one thing to say.
Okay, who is that Bobby?
I, I can understand that a vote isn't required, but I, I don't see why it's saying that a vote isn't possible. So I, I, I think that the town should be involved in that and I don't really understand why the town shouldn't be involved since the town wants to be.
Bobby, we all, I, I think that we all agree that we should be having town meetings. This happens with the school budget as well. There is no referendum for the school. The school budgets are going to be set by the Boards of Education. I absolutely agree with you that we should have a town meetings. And I think, and I absolutely agree that we should be having town votes. There's no question about that. This is going to be a very difficult year with the school budget where it is and also with the fire department requirements. We've got, you know, our municipal budget will, are, what we work on the municipal end of that, we're down to about, you know, ten percent of the budget is, is town functions. And I would like very much to have a vote. But right now, the legal interpretation of this is that we will not. We will certainly be looking to, to see what else we have. And, and all of this is subject to change. What are we going to do, Brett? We're going to, I'm, I'm, okay, I'm going to try to keep up with the typing, sorry about that. So Susie's concerned about democracy, I talked about that. Brett, we just talked about, Susie, extremely problematic, nothing should be passed without a town vote or have to be privileged and develop an online voting method. Something we might be able to do. I don't, I don't think that the state allows that right now, but there is still lots of time for things to change. What will the town government do? This is from Brett. And I assume it's Brett Thompson, there is no last name on anything. But what will the town government do to make sure that the public will be solicited? We will be doing these type of meetings and we will probably be having, I don't, I don't know. I would suggest we'll put out some sort of solicitation. We're obviously going to publish the budget as, as it develops. Or once we get to a draft, we will publish it and and go from that. Remember that we still have got four, six weeks before any of this. I think it was, I think our town, our town, a public hearing was scheduled for April 30th or April 29th, something like that. So we've still got over a month to get to that. And then we'll have more time from that to our referendum. So we may, we may, and let's hope, let's keep our fingers crossed that this gets to a point where we're able to, where the governor is able to allow for this. We must make electronic voting happen, comes from Susan. And we are already looking into it soon. If you want to take yourself to the, to the, to the Capitol and, or research how we can do that, we can, but it is not allowed in this state right now. As I say, we've got, we've got five or six weeks before we even go to our public hearing. Bobby, go ahead.
I, I would suggest just delaying this until we are able to meet in person then.
We are not, we are not allowed to delay it.
This is, this is a state mandate at the present time, correct Angus?
Yes.
Yes, we, we really have minimal control over it at this point. This is a state thing. And I think a lot of people have to realize that we, and Angus has just said it, that we want to have these meetings, we want to have the referendum. But in this present state that we're in right now, the state is mandating this. This is not Angus, this is not Jim and Dwayne. It is a state mandate. And hopefully, like Angus said, that if this resolves sooner than later, maybe we can go back to business as normal. But until it's business as normal, this is, this is the new normal. And we hope to have these meetings and the referendums and whatnot. But at the present time, it's not being allowed.
And this isn't included in the governor's order to, to kind of put things on hold?
This is, this is, this is Executive Order seven I, which was issued March 21st, a couple of days ago. And, you know, we can certainly make these available for you. If you, if you would like them, just email Gina, we can email these executive orders out to you. They're all, they're all on, online at ct.gov, which I think we've been putting on all of our email blasts. So that's, that's all I have. And if anyone else has any other conversation or any of the folks that are here, which are really our camera people, will go for a motion to adjourn. I don't see anything else coming up.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you all very much for attending. I apologize for any glitches. We will get better at this as we go along. And I appreciate your input. Scott and Sherry, thanks so much for coming out and thanks for all the work that you're doing.
Not a problem, anytime Angus.
Really appreciate it.
Great community effort.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, guys. We'll, we'll see you all, see you all next time.
Thank you.
What to say, folks? Shall we get started?
Sure.
Might as well.
All right, let's see what we can get through. Laurie, our first item is what? The approval of the minutes from our last meeting?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to, sadly, I should have the ability to bring them up. I do not see that capability before me.
That's what I'm trying to do right this second, bear with me.
You can share your screen if you have them on a different screen.
That's what I'm trying to.
How do you do that?
Down at the bottom, at least on mine, it says share screen. And then you would have to bring them up.
Okay, the minutes are from February.
That's the budget. Link to town. Do not, hold on, we'll see if, Laurie, can you bring your minutes up? I'm having a hard time getting.
I'm on, the approval of the February minutes is next. No, I'm, I'm using my laptop separately. But February is, is the, Angus, you're muted. February is the minutes that we need to approve, the regular minutes.
All right.
Yes.
Shall I make a motion? I make a motion that we accept the minutes from February?
Okay.
I'll second it.
As well as the workshop minutes from March 3rd, if we could put that in there as well.
Okay, I, I amend then as well.
Thank you.
February minutes and the workshop minutes from March 3rd. Move to accept them.
Somebody else want a second? I was absent for the March 3rd because I was in Florida, so.
Second that motion. Thank you.
All righty, so Laurie, what is the next item on our agenda public?
Do you want to vote or accept them, bud?
You got a vote on it? Say it again, Russ.
Okay, the next is, audience of citizens.
Do you want to vote to accept the minutes?
I thought we had a motion on that, sorry.
I got you, we had a motion and a second and all in favor of approving the minutes of the two meetings. We're going to do this at once.
Hi, hi.
Is done. Wow, this is a special moment, this is the first thing we've ever approved on law. This will go down in history.
Audience of citizens is next.
All right. I have none here with me. Angus, do you have?
My goodness.
They're going to be laughing at us hysterically when they watch this.
Or, or why they voted yea for us, but yes. No audience from citizens, I will receive the third item, Laurie, that would be a.
Treasurer's report.
Treasurer's, okay.
That's me, I'm here.
Hot dog.
Hopefully everyone received the town deposits, it was actually emailed to everyone today.
Right.
Gotcha? No?
No. It should have been on your email.
Yes.
Yeah, let me go into.
Thank you, Carmella.
You're welcome. Oh, all right, it's in the junk folder, that's why I didn't get it.
Well, thanks a lot, Laurie, I appreciate it.
Kathy's in the junk pile too, let me just put it as not junk, let me see, okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, no more malicious emails, okay.
So, okay, let's see what's happening here, okay.
I found it.
Look at rates, People's United rates, they're plummeting. Of course, that's due to the economic crisis for now, hopefully things will turn around. But, so the rate actually went from one and a half down to one. When I spoke to Mike Kegler, who's the Vice President of Government Banking with People's United Bank, he told me to expect another downward trend. Could, it could go down another fifty basis points. But hopefully things will turn around relatively soon, hopefully.
Tommy, just for fun, there, we have no contractual obligation, they are obligated to meet a certain level, right?
No, there's no, no, there's no level that we have to maintain with them.
Not well, I actually meant they have to maintain with us.
No, 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 it can fluctuate up and down and, no.
Makes sense, sadly, that makes sense.
Whereas Liberty, when I actually, they had that special and I was able to get that 2.35% rate. And that's going to continue for, for a while, which is, which is great.
Oh, really? That's pretty good.
Yeah, so that's, and you'll look at the, the account balances from last year to, to where we are now. There's, we're ahead of last year by 294,183. ECS monies are next, we'll be receiving 833,348 dollars on April 30th, which is half, half the money's budgeted for, for the town.
Is this the second installment, Tommy?
This would be, actually, we did receive one on January 31st. And then this one will be the last, last one for the fiscal year. And that's one half of the total amount.
Okay.
And let's see, Russ, on the memorial fund account, there is the signature card that's actually in my bin at, at the town hall. We just need you to sign that and Jane Monter has to sign that as the assistant, assistant treasurer. So that's just, that's fitting.
Thank you, that's great work, I appreciate that.
Okay, but other than that, I think, I think it's pretty stable. I did talk to Kathy today, we'll be making another wire transfer into the general fund on Friday. I'm not sure exactly how much yet. She has to look at the accounts payables and see where we are. That's it for me.
I'm sorry?
Tom?
Yes?
It will upset the apple cart if you take some of the money out of People's United and put it in Liberty because of the better rate or that just upset her?
Yeah, I can't do that. They had, they had a specific amount that you could put in, so you can't add to it.
Okay.
Otherwise, yeah, I would definitely be doing that.
Good question.
But having said that, at least we were able to get, I was able to put 500,000 in there and add, which was added to the amount that we originally had at Liberty.
No, that was good.
So, but I wish I had better news regarding People's United, but that's, you know, that's not just them. I mean, you know, rates are just plummeting across the board, so.
That is true. Excellent, very good. Laurie, where do we go? Recommendations of selectmen?
Recommendations, yes.
Angus, it's your turn.
Okay, I'm unmuted. The first thing that we should talk about, I think, and this is going to be a longstanding discussion because of the nature of our town right now. But as you're all aware, the governor has issued multiple executive orders over the past week or so. Seven I, which was issued on Saturday, on Saturday, I think. And it basically, it changes how our budgets are approved, both Boards of Education and our own town municipal budget. It takes away, it requires the municipality to to require the Board of Selectmen to authorize the Board of Finance to adopt the budget. Notwithstanding, it takes away, there will be not be any votes, any in-person budget adoption requirements or town meetings, although I think we, in-person town meetings. So, uh, we could, I would suggest that we could have some sort of a virtual town meeting with this. As, as we go on, we're going to have much better control of the technology and I think we can do something like that. And it requires, and, and you guys also will set the mill rate based on that. The Boards of Education, what, what really is of interest to me, it does the same thing for the Board of Education. The regional Boards of Education will comply with the public meeting. Requirements, which really are virtual. There's no in-person meetings. Um, and we think, we have to, we have to publicize and receive public comment. But, um, there is no in-person dialogue and no, and there is no vote is I think the biggest thing. There's no referendum for the Board of Education budget and there's no referendum for our budget. Those are set by you. I think we're gonna have to do a, a better job, not, not a better job, but a more, um, uh, we're gonna have to distribute this more ways than we ever thought we could, uh, so that people can have an opportunity to review it with ample time to offer their comments about it. I'm not sure yet how we're gonna do that. And frankly, I'm hopeful that this, that we get to a point, we're, we're a little over four weeks away from our, uh, public hearing. And, uh, seven weeks away, I think, from our town meeting. So, I don't know if it's realistic, but I'm certainly hoping that we are able to, uh, so that some of these orders get rescinded and we can gather in public and have these town meetings and have these public votes. Um, I'm more concerned with the Board of Education budget because that is, uh, that is going to be quite a big hit for us right now. So that's the biggest.
I'm sorry, can I question?
Yeah, please.
For the Region Four budget.
Yep.
Though that whole budget, they're going to set it and just give it to the selectmen and say, this is what we approved.
That's our budget.
And then we have to incorporate that into our budget.
Yep.
Okay.
Could I make a comment to that? If, if the Board of Selectmen are going to have virtual input from the town via Zoom, the kind of thing we're doing right now, wouldn't the Board of Ed, Region Four, and our own Board of Ed do the same thing?
Yes, they are. They have got the same requirements that we do.
Okay, so there is some vehicle for the public to voice their opinion about the budgets.
Yes. There, what there is not is a vote.
Well, hopefully, they would take into consideration the reactions of the public to whatever budget they put forth.
Yes. Um, I'm not sure how that will be tallied like a vote would.
Uh huh.
But.
I'll try not to laugh at that.
I am, sorry.
I was, I was resistant to jumping in on that sarcastically.
Well, yes, I know. And, you know, you, you can think of, of any year that this would have been an opportunity and this, this is not, it's gonna sound as generous as it is, but if ever, ever there was an, an opportunity to, to see the Region Four budget defeated, this would have been the year because we're gonna get hit, Deep River's gonna get hit hard and Chester's going to get hard. I think there would be some, uh, some resistance to that budget, but, um, unless something changes between now and, and the end of May, that will not be the case.
The elementary school is coming in on April, uh, second Tuesday, April 14th.
Yep.
Um, and as far as I know, they're, they're gonna Zoom. I'll give them the link so that they can Zoom into the workshop at 7:15 that night.
Yep. That sounds good. I mean, it's good they're going to come. Uh, there's, their budget actually has got a very big increase.
Okay, they have, um, this Thursday, let me see if I can find the email. This Thursday at 11, the elementary school has a workshop scheduled via whatever platform they're using.
Yeah, they're using Google.
Yeah, Google Meet or something like that. So they have one at 11 on Thursday.
Yes, they do. As far as I know, that, I think that's their last workshop.
Yeah.
I'm not sure. I've given them some input. Um, their, you know, most of their budget is driven by making up for bad accounting with things like the cafeteria fund. I think that's a $75,000 increase.
Wow.
Um, I think there's another $75,000 increase in, um, insurance fund, not the, not the insurance, but the, the, the fund for the insurance that was driven down to practically zero. Um, and that, that needs to be at a balance of a million two at least to be, uh, to be safe. So that's, that's gonna be, I think, another 70 or 75,000 and there's another 25,000 that goes into, uh, shoot, I've lost that.
How was the accounting done so that there were those shortfalls?
Those are, those are good questions. Um, and I don't know, I badly is the, the real answer. How was that done badly?
As a descriptive, yes.
They just, uh, they were just, they had, they had accounts that they were moving money from a council account without, um, accurately tracking that. So they just ran, they ran, I, I, I would not be surprised. I don't know the details, but I would not be surprised if money came from the insurance fund to pay for the property. I, I just don't know. For some capital expenses.
Pay for the what?
I don't know the details. For some capital expense or, you know. Bud and, uh, Bud and Dwayne were going to a lot of their workshops, mostly having to do with, um, with Capital Reserve. Uh, and they might, might have some input onto that.
We were going to meetings on Capital Reserve and they switched it over to the insurance. Um, it's self-insured and they had a lot of claims and they did not, uh, Dwayne, help me out here. Track of their, uh, of those claims. That's not a fair statement, but they.
It was bad accounting.
Well, they didn't keep track of them as well as they should have. They try and keep a reserve fund in case they're taken by surprise. They completed, they depleted the reserve fund and they're asking now to replenish that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a, it was a bad year of a lot of claims, a lot of expensive claims. And it didn't get funded properly, the reserve. And now the reserve is, is almost depleted. And they want to have at least 1.2 million dollars reserve in that fund. And that, that covers all the teachers, parent educators, Town of Essex employees and Town of Deep River employees. So everyone has to pony up and have their fair share, try to get this 1.2 million back up.
So that's around 75?
Well, they talked about trying to do it over, right bud, over a four or five-year period.
Four years, that's correct.
And we were supposed to have a workshop last night, I believe.
That's correct.
We didn't, we didn't have it because of what's going on. But, um, we are still working on, on that. About how we're gonna fund it and how quick we're gonna fund it.
Yeah, so that's, that's part of it. As I said, the, uh, the cafeteria fund, that, that was a, that is something that we've been paying all along. It just never was part of the budget. So every year they would, they would run into the, into the red and then it would get thought up at the end of the year or, or not. This is something that.
And this, this collective they, who are the they's?
Region Four and the Board of Education.
Are these the Board of Ed members or is it the financial?
No, no, the financial, financial, um, what do you, manager. The accounts manager up there. They, they've replaced the, they remember, what was his name? Garth was here for many years.
Right, and then he got replaced by somebody who also.
And Kim came in, Kim came in. And, uh, it's, it appears as if, and I don't know, Dwayne and, Dwayne and Bud probably have a better clue on this than I do, but it appears as if she just did a terrific job at managing, excuse me, managing the money.
Did you say terrific or horrific?
Horrific. Very bad. She did a very bad job, um, apparently. Now, you know, who knows what the reasoning is for that, that she could have just been doing what she was told as opposed to doing what, what was proper.
Is she still employed?
No, she, she's gone for three or four months now, maybe more.
She left right at the beginning of the school year.
Yeah. They have an interim.
Is there, is there any internal mechanism with which the Board of Ed, whichever board it is, our Board of Ed or the Region Four Board, is there any internal mechanism whereby they can make up some of that shortfall through their own budgeting curtails rather than laying it all on, back onto the town? You know, like maybe in some departments, they're gonna short this department and short that department. So rather than fully funding that line item, use some of that money to pay back some of this.
Yeah.
75%.
The, the couple of workshops that I went to Carmelo, the Region Four workshop, John Winthrop is losing a whole, um, I don't know, I guess a section you would call it. They used to have north, south, east, west.
Yeah.
So they're, they're losing a whole section. I believe that's three teachers. Um, so, and they are not replacing them. But that money there is just going elsewhere in the budget.
Okay.
Um, so.
Isn't somebody in that position supposed to be bonded?
Uh, yes. Yes.
Okay. Doesn't the bond make up for this?
Apparently not. It's a good question. We've got three towns looking at it, three towns impacted by it and, um, and the solution appears to fall back on the taxpayers to fund it. Um, they have, they are making cuts to programs, or not to programs, but to teachers, as Dwayne says. In the, in the elementary school, I think when we look at that budget and we speak with them, they will tell us that there is no increase in the budget other than making up for budgeting shortfalls from past years. They're, you know, I think they, they told me they had a $3,000 increase in their budget, if not for the cafeteria and the insurance and things like that.
If, if you lose a whole section, did they account for why there's not some form of savings that results from that?
Uh, I have not had any conversations other than with the superintendent and the chairman of the Board of Education, together with the other two select people.
Right.
And, uh, yeah, they, you know, insurance, it looks as if the health insurance is estimated to go up somewhere between 18 and 20%, so the cost of that's gonna go up. There are contractual, uh, contractual obligations for teachers' salaries and things like that.
Okay.
All of the regular stuff that, that.
So it just would have went up that much more?
Now, Deep River gets hit very hard because of a miscalculation in ADM. And I will be able to share those numbers with you. I'm sure that they will share those numbers with you as well.
A miscalculation of ADM? What, when did this one come about?
About two weeks ago. Actually.
And that's at the elementary school or at the?
Both.
The region, okay.
Both.
That's preposterous.
Yes.
Seems like there's.
It is, but it, it is preposterous and it is incredibly frustrating with, um, you know, the, the hit that Deep River has taken and we take last year out of it, you know, the hit we've taken in seven of the last eight years has been tremendous. Uh, the amount of money that we've put into this, into this school budget based on our ADM. But these are numbers that are, that we don't, we don't have a whole lot of voice about, you know, it's not, especially at the elementary school. There, there are shortfalls in the overall budget, things like the insurance or, let's forget the insurance for a second, the cafeteria fund. That has been a fund that goes on for many years. It's gone on. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a program that is designed not to make money, but it's never been in our budget. And it costs us $75,000 a year. How that happens, I don't know. Did they over-budget everything else and then just paid that with, uh, overage? I think so, but I don't know for sure.
Seems like there's been a lot of sort of recurring, I mean, it may, may all be separate incidents, but the accounting has not been good.
No, that's.
At the region, at the region level, and now it seems at the elementary school level as well. It seems like there's some systemic, some systemic issues.
Yeah, no, that's, that's right. And I think that they are on their way to correcting those. I mean, finding them in the first place, kind of, the change in administration kind of finds them. They found them and now they're correcting them. The, the, the pain is that they were, every single one of those errors was or missed, missed, or bad accounting, all was in the negative. It wasn't, none of it, they find any money. They always found the deficits or depletions.
Yeah, yeah, it's not, none of it's going in our direction.
No. So that's gonna be our big hit is, uh, is our schools.
Is any of this coming out in the audit?
A lot of it was, I think this, I think the cafeteria fund is a direct result of the audit. Dwayne, you, you were speaking, sorry.
Yes.
But, Laurie, when you say audit, you mean our audit or the Regionals Four audit?
Region Four.
Region Four.
Region Four, the elementary school, they, because they're separately audited.
Yes, that they are. They are separately audited and then the, the audit is who actually pushed for that cafeteria fund to be funded properly as opposed to funded, not, not funded at all.
They have the same auditors, uh, Mahoney Sable?
Yes, they do.
Not, not that it's, not that it's any good news, but John, you had asked, um, with the new administration, I think, I think Brian, um, and I'll say it publicly, I had my doubts in the beginning, but he's uncovered a lot of stuff.
Yep.
He, he's doing a, an excellent job, I feel.
Yeah.
Bud sits there right with, with me at a lot of these meetings and, uh, the interim finance guy they have just filling in right now, uh, he's a very smart man.
Yep.
It's unfortunate for all of us, especially Town of Deep River, that we're getting hit as hard as we are and finding out that the ADM was screwed up, the cafeteria was screwed up.
Yeah.
And then tack on a 20% increase for health. And then I believe that this year's contract for the teachers is a, a decent sized raise plus a step. And so that compounds it even worse, um, on the salary. So it just, uh, if the terminology, perfect storm, other perfect storm has hit us in the wrong way.
Yeah. No, I think, I mean, I've, I've, I have a certain level of faith, uh, or belief that he would do a, a good job based on his background and what he did down in Stanford. I mean, he's got a background with dealing with complex, big financial issues and problems. So I don't, I know, no question there. I was just, you know,
Yeah.
it's just interesting that all these things keep coming to light. That's all.
Yeah. I agree with your assessment about, uh, Brian White, just in meeting with him in January, but he seems to be turning over a few stones and finding some nasty creatures.
Yeah. Yep. No, I think he's, uh, yeah, and I don't think he's shy about, if he does, he's not gonna, he's not gonna re-bury him. He's gonna bring it to light.
No.
Yeah.
So. And, and all good. I like Brian as well. But they, they're about to pass on 600, $700,000 to Town of Deep River. If they're not gonna cut their budget someplace, we're gonna have to cut our budget. And if we don't cut our budget, we're gonna send taxes out to people who will have to cut their budget. So while he's a good guy, I too wish to find some cuts internal to education.
Oh, yeah. No, I'm not, not, that's.
Cut the choir for a year or something. I don't know, but, uh, don't pass it on to us and then it.
Yeah.
My own impression.
I agree with you entirely bud, entirely.
I, I agree there too. I mean, I think get all the, get all the ugliness and the warts out in the light and then if they need to make some cuts, then do so.
But I appreciate everyone saying they agree with Bud, but doesn't matter. They're the ones about to hand it to us. And if Angus has, uh, laid out.
No, I don't, it sounds like we don't have much choice this year.
And this is the bad, bad year for it to happen because we can't vote on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of ironic. Yeah, it's kind of ironic.
Yeah, and we have told them, because I know when I've gone to the various workshops again and again, I've said the same thing. You can't be handing this to us. It's too much.
Well, and to be handing it to us now at this time when so many people are losing their jobs and don't have money coming in and now you're going, and not us, you, but they're, now people are told, they have to cough up money to pay for this, these shortfalls, the Board of Ed's budgets is, it's preposterous. How do you go to people and ask them to cough up money they don't have anymore?
People that can't pay for food right now because of what's going on.
That's correct. That is correct.
Yeah, you could come in with a zero this year and there's going to be people that aren't going to be able to pay it.
That's correct. You're right. Um, well, I, 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 not to be, not to shirk anybody from chatting more, we are not going to solve this issue tonight.
Tonight.
Maybe not at all, but.
It's good, it's good to start talking about it. I mean, this is where we are.
Start talking about it. Wouldn't it be nice if, instead of approving their own budget, which is almost dangerous, um.
Oh, it's, it's.
Have to come to the Board of Finances.
It'd be nice if it could come to the Board of Finance to all three towns, say, nope, cut it.
You know, this is, this is just in the beginning process, but the, uh, the Council of Small Towns has put out a, um, a questionnaire. They're, they're willing to lobby to, for some other kind of a voice from the community um, as opposed to just allowing for the region, regional school districts to set their own budget. It's, it's very, I think it's dangerous to, to open that up. I, I think we need to allow to have some voice if that if that even means two or three voices from each town's Board of Finance participate. Um, but I don't know where that's going to go.
It won't come down in time.
Probably not. You know, you, it's hard to say that. Um, it, it probably won't, but, uh, we have, uh, the, it seems as if we get an executive order every day or two. So it might. I, but we have got to get, you know, I've already replied to costs. We've got to get, get, get that in motion. You know, right now they're just seeing if there's a taste for it.
That's the role of the Board of Education is to, you know, not only set the budget, but to bring the budget back to reality. That's, that's their, their job. They don't, but they seem to rubber stamp it evidently.
Well, I can't speak to the Region Four budget. I haven't been involved in too much of that thus far. Really just one conversation. The elementary school had a pretty good battle amongst their, um, board members and they did keep it down. I mean, if you take away the add-ons that we've spoken about, they're very close to flat. So again, we get into a dilemma for the Board of Education because when you, when you start, when you're taking add-ons to, to a budget that, that increased the budget, where do you, you take, you're taking away the guts of the programs or, or administrators and, and that's, that's always the place I advise they look, but they, you know, they look at teachers first, programs first. I don't know how to, how to, how to advise them other than just get in there and cut.
And, and, and again, I'm just repeating, if they don't cut, we have to make those cuts. We have to have to do it or or we send each individual.
And what, I, I would suggest that what you're going to hear from them is that you're going, you're going to be impacting the programs of the school. The schools, you, when you start making the cuts that, that need to be made, that are going to be substantial enough to make a difference, you're going to be taking away from the, one of the selling points, the, the things that increase the value of where we live is the, the education. You know, if you take away from the schools, it's taken a long time to build up Deep River Elementary School to where it wasn't looked down upon. And now we're putting our kids that, you know, last year we had the valedictorian and the salutatorian. We're both Deep River kids. Um, that's a, that's a, that's a tremendous strides that they've made. Um, and I'd hate to see them start hacking away at that. At the same ti- and believe me, I'm not arguing with you. I agree with you. We, they need to do something, but I, I don't know what that something is.
Well, the, the sixty-nine that we had to put back in their budget, they should be able to operate without that sixty-nine and that sixty-nine goes towards one of the two seventy-fives. Yes, no, maybe?
That sixty-nine was, uh, last year.
Right, and we had to put it in, this year put it back into it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't think you can put it into another year, can you?
No.
No, but we don't have to raise, I mean, they should be able to operate as if they didn't have that sixty-nine and use that sixty-nine towards the insurance or towards the CAF.
They did and they, and they refunded some of that money.
But for, for this current budget status.
Yeah, no, I understand. I think that, that sixty-nine, um, you know, I, I think what you're saying is a very simple way to look at it is you came to us and you didn't need sixty-nine thousand. You gave it, most of this back. You should be able to keep that same thing again.
Right, that same thing plus the other seventy-five. Sorry.
How do you pose the absence of all these kids in physical classrooms is going to affect their budget? Right now, the governor is saying the kid, these kids may be out until the next school year.
Next year, yeah.
Yeah, they are. Is that right? Somebody had heard that, but I didn't hear it from their governor.
I, I heard that, I heard that this afternoon, that they're out, they're out through the end of the year. I mean.
Is that official?
I, I heard that, I heard that. I don't, I haven't seen.
Going to be in school. They'll be doing online learn.
So. That's, that's what I heard that this afternoon. I don't, I haven't seen anything in writing to that effect, but I did.
I heard it was to expect it only. They didn't say that it was a definite. It was to expect.
Right, but in the event that that happens, there's no, no kids sitting in classroom. So there are no buses, transportation, um, school personnel, heating the buildings, using books and papers and all the other expenses that they have. That has got to affect their budget significantly.
Well, the. Good question. I, I want you to pause for a second. Teachers get paid. I bet you the school, the buses get paid. You got a contract. It's got books. Building's got to be heated, electricity. I went through the same thing with Angus. I don't think you're going to find much, some, but I don't think you're going to find much. You're not sending the football team. You're not sending the baseball team anywhere, are you? Not sending.
No, there's no sports.
No sports, so there should be some savings there. Your point is good. Those, those are all contracts to services, aren't they?
Teachers are. I don't know about the other ones.
The bu- the buses contracted.
Yeah.
The buses are contracted. I assume the day, the sub, the day subs, we wouldn't have to pay for those, but I, I don't think we're going to find much, but you're going to find something. What about the parent educators? Do they get paid? They're not contracted? Okay.
They get paid.
They get paid? Well, not by contract, if they're not, or they don't get paid, right?
That's a good question. I'm not sure.
I, I don't know if the parent educators get paid.
I don't think they do because I've got, I've got, my wife, one of my employees is a parent educator of Winchester and, uh,
I have, I have a niece that's a parent educator, not in our district, but I don't believe she's getting paid.
No, I, I think that's correct.
You mean, that, that, when I was teaching, they all got paid. They didn't do it for free.
Oh, they get paid when they go to work.
Were you a parent?
Was I a parent?
They get paid when they go to work.
Teacher, yeah, we have a teacher contract. You get paid.
No, but the parents get paid.
Not when they're out of work.
When they're teaching.
Now they don't. Not right now they don't, is what we're saying.
Kids are not in class. They don't need the parents.
Right.
Which supports your point. There should be some savings there.
Right. Anyways.
Dwayne, yeah, Dwayne, I think you're right. It just says, uh, that they're going to be closed definitely through April twentieth. But, but he said likely, not until the fall.
Right, not good.
I had heard April twentieth also, John.
Yeah, but he made further commentary that he thought they wouldn't probably reopen until the fall. So we'll see. I guess it's not a definite.
And the Capitol is not opening up again until April thirteenth at the earliest, if at that.
Okay.
So the legislature is not going to be in until at least then.
Yeah.
All right, uh, shall we move to our, um, next item on the agenda, which I assume is the budget, right, Laurie?
No, correspondence is next and.
Does anybody read this letter?
I haven't seen any.
Okay, uh, all right, shall we go? Is it budget time that?
Budget, monthly budget report.
All right, it had been Angus and my anticipation that I could bring budget up um, on future meetings. Hopefully I will have that skill, but at the moment I, if, if it is here, I do not see the capability. So, uh, everyone has looked at the budget. Does anyone have any particular items they would like to discuss? Um.
I think at the, hey Bud, at the bottom of the screen, I think it says share screen.
It should, but I don't seem to have.
Oh, you don't see it?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Yeah, let's give it a try. How about that? Yes, there it is. If I highlight it, I'm over and get it. And Angus and I did okay this afternoon. Let's see if I can.
Yeah, we did very well in our rehearsals, but.
Uh, let's see here. Let's see, I can do this. I can do this.
I can't see it on your screen, but I can see it on my phone, so I can follow you there.
Yeah, I have it next to me.
Yeah.
Hopefully if, uh, if this share button is what we promised, I should be able to bring it up.
Needs to be active on your desktop or something.
All right, let's see. I'll do revenues first. Okay, that's not, that's Tommy. No, Tommy, I want my. Eric, can people hear me? Can people see my revenues?
I can see you.
No, on my phone I can see.
I have it.
Hold on. Don't give up yet. Don't give up yet.
Print them off.
There we go.
Um. Uh, and while I attempt, does anyone have any thoughts on the budget they would like to chat about? Here we go. Continue. See if I can share.
Yeah.
You have started, um, screen sharing.
Oh, you have.
It was there.
Yeah.
I'm back to where we started. Here we go. Can you see that? You can't see that.
That's okay. I don't see that there were any municipal grant funds received. Or am I looking in the wrong?
They released those, uh, two weeks, or they didn't release them two weeks ago, but they voted to release them two weeks ago. They just not have been sent out yet.
Okay.
And Laurie, which specific grant funds were you chatting about or thinking about?
Um, the, it's on the bottom of the first page and it was the grants for municipal projects, but that.
Right.
Depends if they're just.
None of them have. If you look, um,
Yeah.
Town aid road has not come out yet. LoSiP has not come out yet.
Yeah.
And as Tommy just pointed out, we're, uh, we're going to get our last, uh, Asian grant.
The ECS, yeah.
Yes. Um, to your point of LoSiP has not come out and Angus, have you, oh, I thought they froze LoSiP.
They did.
I thought you told me that first. You would be my source.
Um.
We have thirty-one. Good news is we have, whatever we have in the revenue, we have as an alternating expense in the, and the expense.
Well, that's because we haven't, um, done, completed a project yet and used it.
Good, okay.
We may use that, you know, my, oh, actually what we might do, if we can, I've got to explore, is use that money plus the, um, the thirty thousand dollars for the school roof and finish the school roof project now when the kids aren't in school as opposed to waiting until, uh, summertime.
Okay, that'd be very good.
But that's, I'm not sure we can use, uh, school repairs for most of the school repairs.
Oh, okay, okay. Um, since we're looking at revenues, it is, it's somewhat impressive how our revenues are coming in. Our revenues are extremely strong.
Right.
Uh, those first.
Also point out that the, um, uh, arrears are up by almost thirty thousand.
They sure are, yeah.
Yep. That's, that's very good. That's very commendable for a mistake.
And the interest and fees associated with those arrears is up, is up thirty-one. So there are some of those are long-term out there. So yes. Sixty thousand. So, good.
Wow.
But that's good because revenues are way down if you look to see like building permits.
Yeah, I saw.
Yes.
So we've got some, some grounds to make up, but, uh, we also have building, you know, we'll see what the economy does, but this is the time when the people would put on their backboard and stuff like that.
That's correct. Building permits and planning and zoning fees, they're down substantially as well. We budgeted fifteen, well, yes, we have two in. We've got twelve to go.
Yeah, I don't, the only thing that's going to help that is if Mount St. John's comes in.
Uh, which probably won't be in this year, but.
I don't expect that this year, no.
So, but, but while, while we're taking a moment to point out things that, uh, aren't to do, the taxes are coming in very well and we expect the state to live up its, uh, promises to us. We should do fairly well. We should get pretty close to, we have budgeted eighteen million dollars. I think we should get eighteen one five nine. We should get pretty close to that. I, I think.
I would, yes, we will.
Good, uh, all right, of course, uh, let's focus on expenses.
I gotta bring that back up.
My, uh, rule of thumb here is we're in what, the ninth month, so we should have about twenty-five, uh, twenty-five percent left in every category. And, uh, for the most part, I think we're, we're fairly on, we're above budget. We've got excess cash available to us. Did I say that correctly? Yes. I think we're okay in selectmen. Um, Angus has important, if we were, if we're not going to have a ref, pool, elections will take some pressure off of their budget and our referendum goes to June, so we'll still have some rubs up. I see they.
But we will, will we have more printing expenses to get a physical budget printed and or just more postcards sent twice or something like that?
Yeah, there will be some more expenses. We'll just have to figure out how we're going to do it best. I mean, and I don't, I don't have any ideas on that right now.
Let me, let me catch up with Laurie's question. If, uh, when we send out postcards, do we send it out of election, uh, budget or do you?
No, just for budget. We send them out for budget.
Okay.
We send out the budget on a postcard and tell everybody to vote as, as nicely as we can, try to indicate that they should vote against Board of Education.
Not that we're swearing anybody.
I'm looking at town hall operations in total. Here we are again at the, uh, the ninth month, but we've got about forty-two percent of our town hall operations. Angus and I talk about this all the time, as do we. Um, we've only spent about fifty percent out of fuel. Now, that fuel is also automobiles and that type of thing, so we will continue to incur it, but we budgeted a hundred and we've spent forty-nine, so, so.
I attribute, I attribute that to two things. I think the bigger contributor is, uh, the lack of snowplows. We have not had to use the snowplows and, you know, you send those guys out for five trucks out for eight hours, you use a lot of fuel.
Correct.
Um, and we really have not done that. And we have done, you know, we put a lot of effort into the, um, utilities, uh, to try to slow, you know, better our use of, uh, lessen our use of, of, uh, gas and electricity and.
Very good. And, uh, and it has sort of a two ramifications. One, it should contribute to a, a surplus at the end of this year. And second, you know, the second we will discuss, do you think there's any savings we could take out of there for next?
But I think like you and I spoke about this afternoon, we were practicing this. I think we'll look at that as.
We'll look at that.
We have to look at historic and see.
Yes.
This year has just not been normal.
Nope, um, I think town clerks slightly at thirty-one thousand, thirty-one percent left. The Board of Finance, we always do our part, forty-five percent left. Um, we've got seven thousand dollars, seven seven. We haven't paid the auditors. And I'll just, yes, I don't know what, I, I find, okay. Assessor is, uh, down now. Oh, Laurie, did you want to ask a question about that, uh, that, uh, BMS?
BMSI, it, uh, that wasn't.
That's in.
There, I'm trying to find, that's in, uh, special services. There, I'm trying to find, that's in special services?
Yeah, that's special services.
Okay.
That's for programming, we've spoken about this before, that's a new, new software that was.
That's right.
Not planned for.
Good, Assessor seems to have 37% left, 32%, 38%, so they seem to be okay, Tax Collector, same, we can stop anywhere, Special Services, this is BMSI.
Memorial Day, Veterans Day.
Yeah, that's, that's a.
Is that still a typo, if you will?
No, it's just, she entered in, we bought a bunch of flags, which we usually do, she bought them early, because a couple of flags in the town hall were out, but more importantly, the flags along the Main Street, those were all, we had to buy a bunch of replacement brackets, I don't think that belongs in this line, we'll put that in, probably into contingency if it's like that or something like that, so that, we'll take that out of there, and that'll get, that'll come right back to where it should be.
Okay.
Good, good answer.
But thank you for replacing them.
Yeah, no, of course.
Some of them were getting pretty ragged, weren't they?
Oh, they were, yeah, no, they were falling down.
Planning and zoning, everyone, I have not met the new planning zoning officer, but she is coming in at a salary somewhat below Kathy, so should be.
She will, and we'll see that in next year's budget, too.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
Anybody else, a building official, his salary looks like it could go over, this is a consistent conversation, but his total budget is 30%, so I think he's going to be in on budget. Inland Wetlands, they're under budget substantially, but they never bills until the end.
End of the year, right?
Employee benefits, how should we answer this one Angus, we have a couple, we have one more payment to make, most of these?
Yes.
Okay, we should not count any of those substantial dollars?
No, don't, don't, those are not, you're not going to see savings there at all.
It seems like we should know that number almost to the penny, good, all right.
The only thing, you know, the speaker, the social security is the only one that might fluctuate.
Okay, well, penny bond salaries, that's correct, so, oh, that's a good point, okay, yeah, police protection, I don't know what to say about police protection, we've got a lot of things going on.
Yes, we do.
That we've got dollars available, because the state did not charge us for the, originally, we've got numbers all over the place here, but bottom line number is fairly good.
Yeah, this is what, we've spoken about this, I think at least the last couple of meetings, we're going to find that some of these lines are going to go considerably over, but the bottom line is going to be.
Surplus.
Good, yeah.
Now, how's the new guy starting, is he doing okay, any?
Oh, Tom, no, I think Tom's going to be great for us, he's got some new ideas, you know, we're going to see, we're going to see in the next year, quite a transition from Dawn, Ray and Pete to Tom, Matt, probably Rob, and probably one more, if everything goes right, I think we have three, three part-timers, it's going to be better coverage, better hours, and less money for us to manage.
And to reduce our health insurance and our pension, too, so yeah.
And they're all on board with being just part-time?
Yeah.
So, okay, so we've talked about police protection, as we have fire department, Laurie, do you want to lead a conversation, I, for instance, let's start the conversation with the banquet they canceled, so they should be, have a surplus of $4,200.
Right.
Jimmy tells the other, except what Jimmy told us the other day, he's going to find a place to put that, so we need to talk with those guys about that.
I'll tell you what they're going to do, they're going to try to carry that over, because they rescheduled that meeting, that banquet for October.
It's October now?
They didn't cancel it, they postponed it.
Yeah.
True, but aren't we going to budget $4,200 in next year's budget for the?
That'll be, no, that'll be for next spring, they're going to ask for $8,400.
Oh, they want two banquets.
I'm speculating, but I, that's what I think.
Oh, oh.
No.
I think they're pushing.
Yeah, that's pushing it.
That may be pushing it.
Yeah, okay, so I'll bring up what I had mentioned the other day, part-time clerical salary, we've got a line, they're using the money, they claim they don't have a secretary, so where are they spending the money?
Oh, that money, she, she is there, she takes minutes and things for their, what do you call it, for the fire commissioners.
I don't think they ever claim they don't have a secretary, I think they claim they want a clerk or something to help them out.
Yeah, they have someone who has volunteered, they should be fine, I don't, I don't expect we'll hear that from them, yeah.
Oh, that's good.
Okay.
Hey, there's Mrs. Linder.
Just one in the background.
Special appearances.
Cats wandering in, you know, no, no.
All right, I'm going to move to Highway Department, and I'm going to move, and I'm not going to have anything to say, it seems to me they're on budget, virtually on budget, Angus is going to spend all the tree removal, and maybe.
Go back up, back up.
Yes, yes.
Fire marshal.
Okay, you want to talk about Fire Marshal, he's on budget, so I skipped him, but yes.
Yeah, because there's a lot of lines that are not spent. Not spent.
They haven't been billed yet.
Well, Fire Marshal, do we really get, do we incur, do we annually incur some of those little numbers?
No, he'll give us that, you know, the auto expense will come in at the end of the year.
Okay, okay.
Computer software fee hasn't been billed yet.
Okay.
Deputy Marshall salary, let's see, I'm not sure what.
Auto expense.
Yeah, that'll come in, like I think I said that, that'll come in at the end of the year.
And we will talk about his request a little bit more, if you would like to, you'll notice that the new, the draft does not have his, we have not honored, well, we have put some more money in there, that's not true, we put more money, we'll talk more next week.
Yeah.
Highway Department again, I think Highway Department's pretty much right on budget, we may have a little bit left in contingency, we had, we budgeted 15, we spent 14,7, I think Angus is going to dip into that for some trees.
Yes, I think anything that's left over towards the end of this year, we'll use on trees, we, you know, I'm not going to ask us to increase that tree line, although we could, we could, we could budget $100,000 for that and not spend enough, there are dead trees everywhere, and we're trying as hard as we can to do triage, if you will.
Do we have a lot left over salt and sand, huh?
We do have a lot of leftover salt and sand, this was a great year, we're going to, just like we did last year, you know?
Jim's got a beautiful Persian on his lap. Jim's got, has a beautiful Persian on his lap.
That's my buddy.
Sorry, I thought I was quiet.
All right, so we'll keep on going here, weight removal, while it is slightly over, other than, remember, we were talking about hiring a part-time person to increase the awareness of recycling in the town?
Yeah.
For somebody, but we haven't spent those dollars, but we should be right on for that budget. Municipal libraries on, probate budget, budget, I guess they, the probate budget, probate court must periodically do it. Parks and Rec, they seem to be right on, they're always a bit of a mysterious budget, so, they're over for self-funding, but I'm, I did not look close enough, but I bet you their self-funding program.
Revenues, they should be fine, yeah.
A political subdivision, there's a little bit left over there, and public service agents, much, but that's sort of a fund that Angus can allocate to people who are constantly knocking on his door, even.
What's the story on the library, they're closed, are they still getting paid?
Yes.
They're still working, well, they only, we've laid off one employee thus far, I anticipate that if this continues, then we'll be laying off others as time progresses, but they have work to do, they're doing a lot of, yes, yes.
And the librarian is salaried, correct, she is not?
Yes, that's correct.
That's a good question. I, we've, and if you look at that payment we make to the SCG, we have not made it yet, but it will be made with, I'm certain.
Oh, yeah.
And certainly Fountain Hill has asked for their dollars, and elementary school in the region four are right on their budgets, and you have no assumption they will not ask for the remainder of that over the rest of the year. And Angus tells me he will continue to use that $4,000 of capital, what do we got, 5 less?
Oh, yeah, no, we've got two projects that will take up probably every bit of that.
All right, good, let's go to, let's go to capital, and I cannot remember, Angus, could you, have you refreshed your memory, what is the fire department stations, they have 30?
Oh, yeah, that's the laundry.
Oh, that's right, that's their new washer and dryer, thank you, cool, all right, and I, they're out looking for that, too.
Yes, they are.
All right, if there is something of interest on this budget that you need to think about, gang, is, let's go down to the revow, pre-funding, every year we have asked the town to pre-fund what we assume to be a $150,000 revocation, notice what Kathy has done, she has taken expenses that Robin must be incurring, and put it here into capital, doesn't seem quite right, seems that those dollars should be in Robin's expense line item, we should be moving money into them from the general fund.
The only thing that I would caution us, or, yeah, caution us about is, we want to make sure we don't have two lines of 25,000 or whatever it's going to be, you know, we put 45,000 aside, but, you know, the way we do things, we don't have a line for, in our, in our budget.
And that's correct, what we would, I would think if we were to put an expense in Robin's line item, we would have to put a revenue where we actually committed the, some portion of prior funds we collected as we're coming into this year, so I don't exactly know what to do, what intrigues me, though, is, let's assume that the town allowed us to spend $25,000 revow, so far this year, we have spent 28,000, and we got three months to go, so I'm imagining Robin is spending in excess, in excess of $28,000, I don't think we gave her authority to spend that money.
No, we didn't, and it kind of snuck up on me, I wasn't watching it, I wasn't, I wasn't looking in that for that, I knew that they were out, they, one reason or another, they took a big advantage of the weather, and started their field of data collecting sooner than, than they contracted to.
All makes sense, but Robin should be knocking on your door and saying, I'm going to spend money.
Well, I spoke with her about this after our conversation.
And we should, we, assuming the money, the dollar's going to get higher, and we, the Board of Finance, have to allocate higher dollars, so, and we will deal with that at some other time, and I don't think there's any big issue, other than they don't have authority to spend $28,000, so, we are way down, Angus is still working with the architect, so I assume that most of that 20 will be spent, and that friends ends the exception of our expenditures.
Okay, I have, I've got, I have a question here from Tony Bolduc, who's participating, he's chairman of our Board of, or Planning and Zoning Commission, I don't know, Bud, if you want to unmute him, or I can just text him his answer, Tony, I can just tell you your answer.
No, I'm on here, I muted it for a minute, because my dogs are running around.
Yeah, yeah, the trees, I will take a look at that overhanging branch, there, I'll put you on the list for that again, the GIS, is it, is it on there to get funded still? We're going to have to go over that, it's on the, it's on the budget that Bud and I have looked at, the Board of Finance will be looking at it as we progress, it's still on the line, yes, what was your other question? Oh, yeah, that was that, yeah, that was it.
Thank you.
No problem.
So, gang, as you know, from time to time, as we get closer to the end of the year, Angus and I will do an estimate of expenses, so far, we've spent 12 million, four, around 12 million, five, the school is going to come in and ask for, what's that, two, throw over three, it should be up to 15 something, we just left the revenue side, where I think we're going to come in close to 17, so I continue to say nothing more than, I believe we will have a surplus this year, big it is, I don't know, but I do believe it will be a surplus.
Yeah, we will, it's not going to be tremendous.
And it, but it may give us some pause, as we're thinking about whether we should use some of our surplus to offset the extreme of any rate increase this year, so.
I, I think, but we're not going to see the surplus anywhere near the surplus that we've seen because we, we are getting, we know what, we knew when we prepared the budget, what the state was
That's correct.
So, um,
That's right.
I think we're going to be much closer to, much closer to, uh, to even.
Correct.
But I still, I do think that, um, as we have these conversations, we might, this is a good year for us to maybe take a, take a little bit out of that surplus. To use
Or the capital, or the capital.
The blow.
All right.
It's not something that I would generally recommend, but it might be a practical thing for this year. We've got, you know, we've got two pretty big hits coming. So.
Oh, good. Um, positive, Laurie, what do you have for final, uh, this is where we all get together and sing goodnight?
Um, Thursday at 6:00 PM will be another budget workshop.
Good.
The same link, that agenda's already been posted. Um, and then our regular workshop next Tuesday.
Good.
Actually, Tony, while you're here, the planning and zoning, if you, um, if you want a schedule to come in, you should email, uh, well, I'll, I'll give you Laurie's email and you can just schedule with Laurie an, an evening for you to come to a workshop.
Okay.
And then you can, we can just go over with, uh, with, you can go over with the board, the budget that you and, and, uh, duly prepared.
Okay. Sounds good.
All right. So Angus, you and I have to decide which version of our budget we wish to send to the board. We'll, we can talk about that tomorrow. That would, we should get it to them quickly.
Yes, we absolutely should. Yeah.
Good. Excellent.
Can I, can I ask, does anybody know what, where the firehouse is on their truck at this point?
They're shopping for it. I think we had a little discussion. I know I talked with Bud about it. They're, they're shopping. They're ready to, you know, they're going to be ready to buy it, um, by the end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
I'm, I'm hopeful that we might be able to convince them. I, I doubtful, but hopeful that we might be able to convince them to delay once again. And put the borrow for the truck in the same borrow as we put to get out for the firehouse. And that really would, really take a big load off of the town.
That's right. You, you said that the other night and I forgot. Thank you.
Although I, and, and we should talk about this during the, uh, budget's probably more appropriate, but, uh, I was enthusiastic about a new firehouse. In, in the light of today's, in the world today, you, you wonder if this is the time, but we will
Well, that's, that's, it really is a dilemma because there, there's a real need for, for a firehouse.
Yeah, that building's in sad shape.
And we, even if we don't, even if we don't add on the, the things that they need and just repair the building that we have, we're looking at over a million.
Doesn't a firehouse have to go to the town for a vote and a referendum?
It does. That's, that's partly why I'm
To suggest that their fire truck get wrapped up into a loan for a new firehouse is, is a little presumptuous, isn't it?
It's very presumptuous. That's, that's the dilemma. And that's probably why we will get resistance towards that suggestion. Uh, but, but doing so, I believe, and, and maybe I'm naive, but, um, it shows the town that they're delaying, there was something that they've wanted and, and expressed that they need, um, in order to give the town some relief on the burden that these two purchases are going to put on us. The, 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 the truck loan alone, if we buy that, that truck by itself, it's going to be a $148,000 a year payment.
And finance over five years. That's the kicker.
Right. We buy that over five years. We, if we, if we, again, uh, next year in, in September, whenever we end up going to the town for a referendum, we're going to ask the town to, to approve another 100 and 150, $160,000 payment for a $3 million loan for 40 years. So if, but if we add the truck to that, that brings our payment to $159,000.
That's correct.
It's a, it's a real benefit to, instead of adding $300,000 to the budget over the course of six months to the town, we're adding $9,000 a year. You know, that, that, that payment goes from one payment of 150 to one payment of 159 versus one payment of 150 and one payment of 150.
So the bigger carrot includes both the firehouse and the fire truck.
Right. Make that one borrow.
Yeah.
If I had my druthers, I'd put a sewer expansion on it too.
Push it out 30 years. Not many of us will be here for the, uh, for the final payment. So why not?
Angus, are you currently negotiating with the fire department to, with that suggestion?
Testing the waters with the, but Board of Fire Commissioners first. I'm, I'm confident we'll get a lot of resistance for it. It's going to be a hard sell.
Yes, because it's a need and a want, isn't it?
Yes, I believe that that's the case.
Mm-hmm.
I would agree with that. And I think, you know, uh, if we go, the, the fire truck is included in this budget and if we, if we, uh, had $150,000, if this budget, this budget's going to go down, could very well go down. Does it go down because of the schools?
It's
Go down because of the fire truck that we don't, you know, most of the people that I talk to don't, don't think we need a fire truck. I, I don't necessarily
That was, that was a, one of the reasons why they didn't get the grant, wasn't it? Because they're, they don't use the fire truck enough. So there's not a need for a new fire truck? The grant people didn't think so.
Yeah, that's what was told to me.
Just making a point.
No, I
It's a very good point.
I don't think there's a lot of disagreement on this computer.
On this computer. Very good. It'd be different computers have different opinions. Uh, all right. What say you folks? Should we, uh, we adjourn until Thursday night?
So moved.
Okay. So moved. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second. Russell's second. So, okay. All those in favor of saying goodnight? Say.
Aye.
Bud, that was a good job for your first try.
Uh, thank you very much. Although.